You are watching All About Alpena. All About Alpena is produced by Alpena Marketplace Productions, 8:00 PM to 10:00 PM daily. Visit us often on the web at www-allaboutalpena.com. Once there, you can email us with your thoughts, concerns, questions, and of course we have our updated schedule there, or feel free to call us at (354) 2295.
These days, current events unfold on a dozen channels. Headlines all seem to be shouting, and good news can be as scarce as a moment to relax. So let's turn down the noise this summer, unplug just a little bit, and head to a shelter from the storms of life. The historic Port City of Alpena, located on the Sunrise Shore of Michigan, only a few hours' drive, but miles away from the weight of the world. Nestled between a vast forest and an endless clear blue bay, where the wonders of nature are as welcoming as the local hospitality. We can explore more than 200 shipwrecks in the largest freshwater sanctuary anywhere, count the stairs to the top of a lighthouse, or the masts that jut into the harbor sky at moonrise. Let's take a trip to the friendly picturesque city of Alpena, a haven from the world that's pure Michigan. Your trip begins at michigan.org.
For your viewing pleasure, this broadcast of the Municipal Council Meeting of Alpena is made possible by the funding provided by the City of Alpena. Thank you for your generosity.
Yep.
Good evening, and welcome to Alpena City Council Meeting of July 1st, 2013. Call order, please.
Heiler. Nielsen.
Yes.
Noack.
Here.
Sexton. Walagora.
Here.
And I might add that there are excuse absences that we were aware of.
Yes.
Haven't had one of those since I've been here, so. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Approval of the minutes, there is a, just a small typo on the minutes. Pride was spelled incorrectly, so Karen or Julie are going to take care of that, but anybody noticed any other, anything else with it?
No.
Steven, file. Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address The line forms here. Okay. No announcements this evening. Consent agenda. A, bills to be allowed. B is approval of a budget amendment to pay accrued interest on building authority refunding bond in the amount of $7,964.31. Approval of budget amendment to carry forward $15,000 to copy your budgeted in fiscal year 2012-13 to 2013-14. One council appointment to the Wildlife Sanctuary Committee for a three-year term expiring May 2016 is Terry Goujon. And E is the approval of the reelection of seven incumbent trustees to the Michigan Municipal League 2013 Workers Compensation Board of Trustees.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Set him.
Roll. Ready?
Nielsen.
Yes.
Noack.
Yes.
Walagora.
Aye.
No mayor proclamations, no public hearing. We have a report of officers this evening, treasurer's financial reports, July 1st, 2012 to May 31st, 2015.
As you can see from the financial report, at the end of May, we should be at 91.67% of the budget. The revenues in the general fund are actually at 92.16%. Some of the reimbursements from the state for revenue sharing and rental rehab have not been received yet, but we do plan on receiving them, the budget amounts, by this fiscal year-end. Expenditures in the general fund are actually under budget, running at 87.5%. With one month left in the fiscal year, we should finish in line with budgeted amounts and a solid fund balance.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions? No. And that's a...
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Can we take action on that every month?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. We are receiving file.
Receiving file.
A whole second. Choices aren't there tonight.
Noack.
Yes.
Walagora.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Guys have to do it all this evening.
That's right.
And then we have Resolution Number 2013-10, a resolution granting approval of an application for a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone certificate for Edward, I'm sorry, Gerzlech at 114 East White Street.
This memo is from Karen Hebert. The City of Alpena established a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone on October 6th, 2003. A Neighborhood Enterprise Zone provides for the development and rehabilitation of residential housing by obtaining certificates for a period of time that provides exemption for certain taxes. The City Assessor calculates the taxes to be levied, which are known as the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone tax. Edward Gerzlech submitted an application on June 4th, 2013, for rehabilitation of an existing structure at 114 White Street for a 12-year tax exemption. The application has been reviewed by Jeff Shay, City Assessor, and Don Gilmet, City Building Inspector, and found to be capable. Under Public Act 147, the State Tax Commission requires the governing body of the local governmental unit by resolution to approve the application for a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone certificate. City staff is recommending approval of Resolution Number 2013-10. If so approved, I will forward the resolution to the State Tax Commission within the required time period. The State Tax Commission will then review the application for compliance. The City Assessor and all taxing units affected will be notified by certified mail if a certificate will be issued.
Just to give a little explanation on the length of time and the fact that it is a 12-year pavement. When that district was created in EZ, which is the Old Thunder Bay Junior High Site, that was done in '11 and is mentioned in the resolution, when we set that up, the council approved a set of criteria and a ranking system to determine how many years a project would be eligible for. I believe it was six, nine, and 12 years. A committee was set up to review that, that consisted of myself as the planning and development director, Don Gilmet, Cindy Johnson from the Historic, and then also Bob Lingus, who's at the library and also is a historian, and also Cindy from the, being also the planning commission, that was her primary reason for being on. We reviewed the application and went through the point system criteria, and it did score enough for the full 12 years. So that's why it is 12 years, whereas the other one on the opposite corner of that block that was recently done, that was a clue for nine years because its point value ended up being lower. So that's how that number of years came about.
I move we approve Resolution 2013-10.
Set him.
Yeah, and the only, and that was the only question that I had for Greg earlier today this evening, just to explain the length. That's come up before, so. Any further discussion on that?
Walagora.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Noack.
Yes.
Thanks Greg. And Julie. C is the Fresh Pallet Restaurant, request to put sidewalk tables and allow alcohol consumption at 109 North Second Avenue.
Okay, the City has received a request from the Fresh Pallet Restaurant to serve alcoholic beverages at tables placed on the public sidewalk directly in front of the restaurant. This request is the same as one approved by council in May for the Thunder Bay Winery, which is just on the other side of the storefront. As for the winery, if approved, pavement markings will be similarly applied to the sidewalk designating the area in which alcohol can be consumed. This is required by the Liquor Control Commission. The City Engineering Department will assist in the application of the markings as they did for the previous ones. The restaurant is in the process of applying to the State Liquor Control Commission for a license that will include the request for sale and consumption in the designated sidewalk area. The City zoning ordinance permits and encourages such outdoor activities as a means to increase activity on the sidewalks, in front of stores, and the overall vibrancy of the downtown. The DDA also supports this request per the attached letter. Council must authorize the placement of any outdoor dining drinking areas on the public sidewalk, especially those involving the consumption of alcohol. Staff supports this petition, which is consistent with the previous one, and recommends council approval of the Fresh Pallet's request so they may complete the application process with the Michigan Liquor Control Commission.
It's just, to me, this is just another baby step toward place-making, something that I think we all desire and just makes our city a lot more welcoming and interesting to be in, so. I...
I agree with that. I mean, the same comment that I have on that too, is that, you know, when the Thunder Bay tables did go out here earlier, it does give you the look of a nice outside or outdoor cafeteria, or cafe look, and there are more and more people roaming through that area tonight. Before I came in, I noticed there were several that were sitting at the winery and enjoying a glass and such, so I think it's a really nice look, and I work right across from it, so I have the pleasure of seeing that, and it's amazing how many people do circulate and sit there during the day, and especially at lunchtime.
It's full at lunch. It's very nice.
And I walked through there the other day, and there was a carted off area on the other side from what he's at the winery, and it was, you know, it had the stripe on it that we discussed before, but there was no, there was no seating there. As a matter of fact, the table was on the side of the sidewalk towards the street, and that one's going to stay there, I assume, because it's anchored.
Yeah, there's the put out and then bring back in.
They put out and bring in, so they were probably closed by the time I walked through there.
Right, that would probably be the case, and I assume it would be similar with the restaurant, that they, those tables will be movable, you know, and they'll put them inside once they close.
And it seemed like there was still plenty of room to walk between there, so I certainly don't have an issue with it. Somebody would want to move.
I move that we approve the Fresh Pallet request for outdoor dining area.
Set him. Nielsen.
Yes.
Noack.
Yes.
Walagora.
Aye.
D is the Beach Motel Purchase Agreement.
Hey, as you are aware, the City has been in negotiation with the owner of the Beach Motel at 1204 South State Avenue relative to its purchase by the City. Last week, the parties did agree in principle to the sale, which is outlined in the attached purchase agreement. The sale is contingent upon the City completing to its satisfaction due diligence on the property, most notably a Phase 1 and, if necessary, a Phase 2 environmental site assessment. Additionally, other conditions must be met by both parties. If acquired, it is the City's intent to demolish the motel and house, grade and cede the lot and incorporate it into Starlight Beach. Staff believes this to be a fair agreement, and if council occurs, it is requested to approve the purchase agreement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on the City's behalf. I was in contact with Lisa Rousseau, Senator Alsop's daughter, and asking whether they should go ahead and sign it ahead. What we'll be doing is if the council approves the purchase agreement, we will set up a meeting with them to sign the document, go over what the next steps are, and also, as in the agreement, to provide the $1,000 earnest money at that time of the purchase agreement. And then hopefully I'll have more word on the Phase 1. I know they've been, they should be, I don't think they were in today, but their intent was to get in before July 4th, to do the onsite visit, and they said they should have a preliminary report to me then very quickly after that. So we'll see where that goes as to whether we need to do a Phase 2 or not.
Okay. And certainly, all the terms are available for anybody that's interested in them, and that we, importantly, that if we're dissatisfied with the results of the assessment that we can rescind our offer or renegotiate our offer, so it's incredibly important when you're dealing with something that's been there for quite some time.
I don't know, for the general public, the sales price is $130,000. The City will, is performing the Phase 1 and would perform a Phase 2 if necessary. We're able to do that through our, part of it through our EPA grant, and if necessary, then through the Brownfield Authority, and also demolition will be, we're looking to utilize our Brownfield remediation fund for the demolition of the property if we do proceed, so it won't come out of the general fund of the City. The intent is that they will vacate by the 1st of October, so that would allow us to raise the property before winter, and it won't be sitting then all winter.
And are we, were we successful with what you and Karen had discussed as far as funding it? As far as money, do I want to explain that appropriate?
Yes, we'll be basically loaning the money to ourselves through the equipment fund. There are more than sufficient funds, and then pay ourselves back with interest into that fund, rather than going out and either doing a land contract and paying the seller interest, or getting a loan out through a bank and paying them the interest. We're keeping that right in-house and paying ourselves back from the general fund into the equipment fund. And we have done this for some other acquisitions and purchases in the past. So we see it as a win-win, that one.
I do. You know, I guess not to get too long-winded, but just to reiterate that I wasn't a huge fan of the purchase from the beginning, but did spend some time down in that area and drove past it several times and walked up to it, and you really can, there really would be a noticeable difference from what a visitor or even anybody would see driving through there, to be able to see just that much more of the kiddie park that is directly behind it, and that much more of the beachfront that's definitely behind it. So, kind of sold me, sold me on it, I guess, just kind of envisioning what it would look like without it, so it's pretty much where I was at, and I, staff did a good job, Jeff Shay did a fantastic job negotiating, and so I'm pretty happy with how it ended up.
I agree. I mean, I was in the same area too, not interested in purchasing, but, you know, very interested in continuing to develop the waterfront and stuff, and I think this kind of leads, like, you know, authorizing the tables downtown to make that look a little bit nicer. Removing this is going to do the same for the waterfront, it's just that much nicer. Same thing as Matt went by, same thing, and looked at the property and understood what it could do for us and so on, so I too had my paratime shift.
I don't, I don't have any, I can't imagine that there could be any other decision when you look at what's happening in the township, at some of the older hotels and some of the problems that it's brought, to the citizens actually, to families, who nobody should live that way, nobody should be in a situation like that, and I could just see this hotel being the same way five years down the road, and we'd say, why didn't we get it when we could have? So I agree, we need to take care of it, take care of business. And so...
What's the move on that?
I, I, so you ready?
You might, yeah, and you might ask Greg if there's any particular wording in the motion.
No, just to approve the purchase agreement for the Beach Motel and authorize the mayor and the clerk to sign on the City's behalf.
I move we approve the purchase agreement and authorize up to the Beach Hotel, Motel, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on the City's behalf.
I second.
Thank you. Noah.
Yes.
Walagora.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Okay, and then we have the 2013-14 Service Agreement between the City of Alpena and Target Alpena Development Corporation.
Yes, I apologize, normally we get this to the council in June, and it just simply slipped both Jim's and mine until a couple weeks ago, so we wanted to make sure we got it on this meeting agenda. You have before you the 2013-14 Service Agreement between the City of Alpena and Target. The proposed agreement mirrors the previous ones, except that the scope of services was altered slightly regarding each year we put in, they have put in that they will be focusing on what they set as their priorities for that year. And so, that's what's listed in the new agreement for the 2013 priority components. I won't necessarily read all five of them, but they are there as part of the agreement. Some of those are kind of ongoing, but others are new. Also, I did attach that Jim provided was a summary of the 2012 Target successes and their goals and objectives, which are basically what are listed then in the agreement, those goals and objectives for the coming year. The service agreement has been an effective tool for both the City and Target, with specific tasks and benchmarks clearly defined. Accountability has been greatly increased through the introduction of quarterly meetings with City staff, quarterly progress reports to council, and semi-annual presentations at council meetings. Overall, the formalized relationship with Target under this, under the service agreement has worked very well for both parties. The Target Board will act on the agreement tomorrow, they meet, and so they will be approving it and signing it at that meeting, I would assume. Consequently, staff recommends approval of the agreement, subject to approval by the Target Board, and requests authorization for the mayor and clerk to sign on the City's behalf. Jim is here, Target Executive Director, if you have any questions of him. Otherwise, Jim and I work very well together, and I think Jim has been a very big plus for the community in terms of his services through Target, and we look forward to continuing that. The one thing I didn't mention, it does in the agreement itself, but for the public, is the City, through its budget, is paying Target $40,000 per year, subject to the service agreement, which we initiated, started those about four years ago, so four or five years ago.
I was, I was trying to page through this thing to try and find that, it's not a big deal now, but the successes, and we recognize them.
Is that the very end?
Is it at the end?
The last page.
You know, the successes that Jim and Target have had with us are, have been fantastic and well worth what we put into it, we raised there. The funds that we give to Target substantially in the last couple of years, only because we've seen, we've seen what it can do for us, one of which was, he was an integral part of the, of the ship that pulled into our town on Friday, and, you know, you can't put value on that, you just can't, with as many people as came into our town and were treated right, and he's done several other things with us, so, and he works well with the City, so.
Money well spent, huh?
Money well spent, and no apprehension whatsoever on, on the contract, for sure.
I, well, I also agree with that too, it was really neat. I, as I stated, I work downtown, and I was able to walk down and see New York Town, it was really, really nice to see the ship in and everyone around. I also wanted to publicly thank the City employees. That whole area looked absolutely gorgeous, I was down there the day before, and they were really going through and making sure everything was cleaned up and stuff, flowers were all nice and fresh, and, you know, everything just looked great, so. And Rich, thanks, please let them know how much I appreciate how well that looked.
Excellent.
Would you like to...
Yeah, we need to basically just approve the service agreement with Target Alpena, is that what it is? As simple as that?
I move we accept this 2013-2014 Service Agreement between the City of Alpena and Target and Alpena Development Corporation.
I second.
Walagora.
Aye.
Nielsen.
Yes.
Noack.
Yes.
Okay, bids this evening is portable sewer inspection system for the water recycling plant. Rich?
On April 2nd, the City received an open bid for the purchase of portable sewer inspection system. Bid advertisements were sent to various suppliers, and bid documents were posted to the City of Alpena's website. Seven bids were received for the attached ASBID results. Once the bids were received, the information was forwarded to United Water for review and recommendation. On May 22nd, Mike Lewinsky had submitted an original recommendation. After that was submitted, we garnered some additional information, and that was, at staff's request, pulled from the council packet at that time, from the agenda at that time. We had some additional onsite demonstrations and information provided by bidders, and on June 24th, Mike Lewinsky submitted the attached recommendation regarding the purchase of portable sewer camera. Based on Mike Lewinsky's review and recommendation, it is my recommendation as City Engineer to purchase the portable sewer inspection system from M-Tech out of Cleveland, Ohio, for the ASBID amount of $39,800. Based on the additional needs and funding availability, Mike Lewinsky has requested to purchase additional add-on equipment to improve the abilities of the system. These add-ons are outlined in Mike Lewinsky's memorandum dated June 24th, and these additional items total $19,503.31. Now, out of that, those are not all strictly add-ons per se. A portion of those were included in the bid package as optional equipment. About $8,000, a little over $8,800, was included as an option in our bid package for, it's related to a push camera to go along with the tractor unit. And Mike Lewinsky is here, and he's prepared to discuss those additional items. It is my recommendation that we approve the purchases of this additional equipment to enhance our abilities with a total cost of $59,303.31. So, funds for this purchase are included in the sewer fund line item with $60,000 budgeted. And I'd ask Mike to come up here, because I'm sure there may be a question or two.
I might just say that this piece of equipment is valuable. It's a diagnostic tool that allows us to prioritize and make sure that we're spending the City's money wisely as far as capital projects. It also provides a tool for us to be able to protect the City from lawsuits that could resolve from sewer backups. And the unit that we have right now is 18 years old.
Okay.
It's gotten a lot of use, it's seen the repair shop numerous times, we've learned the piece of equipment intimately because of all the problems that we've had over the 18 years, and we've learned to fix it ourselves. It's obsolete technology, it records in a DVR format, and you can't even get a DVR, DVR tape anymore, you can't buy them anymore. So we need, we need it to upgrade.
Mike, just as a aside, 18 years ago when we purchased that sewer camera, the price tag on that one was $35,000.
And that also included the push camera. The technology has improved tremendously since then. I mean, the ability to seal cameras is just tremendous, I'm sure you've all seen the transporters that are used to defuse bombs, it's the same, same type of technology.
I think it, when it was mutated, about three years, you came to the Boys and Girls Club and saved our necks. I remember everything being...
It really is a good diagnostic tool.
Yeah, it's really, really interesting.
Once you have it, you know, it's hard to get away from it.
Yeah, I guess the question I have is, I noticed they think they will supply you with a backup system if something would happen to this new system, as long as you have a warranty, as a warranty, like, how long is a warranty for the new?
Warranty is 24 months.
24 months?
24 months.
Well, what will you do with our old system?
You know, the old system, we can still use it, it is compatible, the tractor is compatible, the camera is not compatible, and the push camera that we have is. But the downside of that is the push camera that we have to, we have to use to monitor for both the cam, the push camera and the... The camera is not compatible, and the push camera that we have is. But the downside of that is the push camera that we have to, we have to use to monitor for both the cam, the push camera and the main sewer line camera with that system, and we won't have that capability. So, we saw that them being able to provide a loner unit to us within a day, is what they told us.
Why?
That the need to have that backup equipment really just isn't there. And they've assured us that they will support their equipment as long as we own it.
So, they will, they will continue to service the equipment?
They will provide owners, there may be, there may be a fee to it, but...
It'd be kind of odd for them to bail on you in 24 months if you, you know, if you have that.
No, they're a very reputable company.
Equipment that's that expensive, so. So, the old system, basically, would just be there?
We can use the tractor. The tractor is a different style of tractor than what we're purchasing. The tractor we have is really a tractor with tracks on it. The one that we're suggesting purchasing has wheels on it. So, they're good for different applications and different conditions that you encounter in a sewer. And basically, when you put these things in there, you don't know what you're going to encounter.
With our antiquated system, we need to...
You can encounter cinder blocks, you can encounter sandbars.
Right. I think with our antiquated system, this is something that we need.
Yeah, that's what I'm curious about, is, you know, and my question kind of relates to that, is like, when we bid it out, we bid it out at 39.8 for the camera and stuff like this, but yet, we're coming back, and were we not aware of the add-ons for 19503? Or how did that come about?
No, I think we wanted to go with the base bid, so we got a fair comparison to everybody.
Okay.
And then, look at the add-ons, and I have to admit, after the demonstration that we got, there were some add-ons that I weren't, I wasn't aware of. I mean, we're not in the business of video inspecting sewers, and the technology has improved tremendously over 18 years. There are a few things on there that I consider essential. The sound unit, basically, that camera head is extremely expensive, and the sound on the camera head sends out a radio wave so that you can detect that camera wherever it might be located. So, if it gets stuck and you have to dig, and we've encountered that before, you're not going to leave an $8,000 camera head in the sewer. You've got to dig it and retrieve it if it gets stuck. That sound unit gives you an exact location, so you're not digging and guessing where it's at. So, that I consider essential. Some of the other things are just, they're options that I think it would improve our ability to diagnose problems. In the demonstration that they gave us, the tractor with two motors on it allows you to move one set of wheels on one side and actually steer the unit. So, if there's a cinder block in the middle of the pipe, rather than just, well, we can't get through it, you can actually steer around it. You could also go up to a lateral where it ties into the main, and you can come up to it, steer into it, and look right down the lateral to see the condition of the lateral, which is a benefit. I think the other option that I thought was very good was the, instead of having a manually, a manual lift on the camera head itself, the camera sits right on the tractor, and you can adjust how high that camera rides on the tractor manually. You have to determine, when you put it in the pipe, how high you want it to go. And frequently, we'll get into a line and start moving down it, and all of a sudden, the water elevation goes higher. So, if you set that manually too low, the camera goes underneath the water and you can't see anything. With the motorized lift, you can lift that up as high as the top of the sewer pipe while it's in the pipe, so.
Underwater, underwater.
You don't see anything underwater. You want to keep it above.
You can get it above water.
You want to keep it above the water.
Wow.
So, that was an option that, you know, we thought there was some benefit to that. You know, for $3,000, there's a lot of operational benefit to it. And just to kind of tell you the value of the system, we do go in after contractors put new pipe in, just to inspect the workmanship. And I would say about 10 years ago, there was a sewer line replaced on Johnson Street, and it was PVC, and we assumed that it was good workmanship. We went into that line and video inspected it, and the contractor threw in big pieces of rock in S-back fill, and you could actually see the dimples in the top of the PVC pipe. If we didn't have that inspection, we would have walked away from it and not known that it was faulty workmanship. When you show the contractor that, he can't deny it. Basically, I think he told Rich, you know, "I never thought you'd see this. I thought I'd get away with it." So, they dug the line up and replaced it. One of the benefits of having that piece of equipment, you know, we don't use it every day, but it's a valuable tool that I think is worth the city investing in.
How long do you think it'll last?
We're hoping it'll last 18 years like the last one did. Pass my time.
Oh.
Okay. So, and so just to be clear, in fairness to the other bidders, the original bid for the apples-to-apples came in significantly lower, as we can see on the chart, and but because you had budgeted enough, and they showed you impressive additions, that's how the price went from its base price up to where it is now, and you're still under budget?
Yes. I think Rich mentioned that the push camera was included as an option, and they all bid on that option. Putting those two together, the option for the push camera plus the basic system for the sewer main system, their bid was still lowest. They were lower by $1,000.
Okay. Comfortable with that?
For the ground?
Any others?
disparity?
This is the, this is the one I'd really like to give some more thought to, just because I'd like to do a little bit more research, and, you know, obviously, in the water system and so on, it seems like an easy fix, it seems like something that we need and so on, but with permission, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to table this until maybe just the next meeting, just to give me time to kind of look through it and do a little research myself, and make sure that we're, that I can make a honest and informed vote on that as well.
I want you to be comfortable with what you vote on. Is that gonna, you guys got a date on your quote?
I don't, I don't think there's any. No, they have to honor it for 90 days.
90 days?
90 days, okay.
It's a big, big purchase.
It is, and with every other thing that we've got going with the water system and stuff like that, I'd like to just have a little time to kind of think about that a little bit and do a little bit more research on that.
Okay. Fine by that? We're going to move in order to table?
Yes, we need a motion to table.
Then I'd make the motion that we table this until our next meeting, July 18th?
15.
July 15th? Thank you.
I'd rather move it on and have you guys more time than to vote no now, and then we'll have to start all over, so. Because you're obviously aware, it takes all three of us to pass something today, so.
Okay, with that.
I guess I said. Nielsen? Yes. Noah?
Yes.
Wallabara?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, no communications, no communications. Finished business, new business, additional resurfacing projects.
At the previous council meeting, city staff presented resurfacing bids from, for a number of streets in our system. In those street segments, the resurfacing contract came in significantly below the funding we had budgeted. And council gave us direction to go back, look at additional street segments, and come back with other street segments to resurface, to utilize those funds. And then, we also piggyback that on with our funding, a portion of our funding for this fiscal year, the 13-14 fiscal year. By, based on the expenses from the streets contracted for resurfacing, and I just want to say, we do not have exact final numbers. We're still assembling the numbers from the contractor. So, we will be coming back to council with a carryover project for the balance of those funds. But we did want to get this information to council so our contractor could get it on his schedule and begin the work. But based on the expenses from the streets contracted for resurfacing today, and with the 2013-2014 funding, we would have approximately $143,000 available in the local streets, and $102,000 available for major streets, and approximately $60,000 to be committed for additional parking lot resurfacing. The street segments that we have identified were highlighted on the attached spreadsheet. Within the local street system, we are proposing resurfacing 11 blocks of streets with an estimated cost of $137,310. And those are highlighted in yellow. Within the major streets, we're proposing to resurface five blocks, and that length of street on Henry and Wilson equates out to about five blocks of street, that's why we reference it that way, of streets with an estimated cost of $77,670. Those are highlighted in green on that attached spreadsheet. Additionally, the city will utilize the $60,000 remaining and designated for parking lot resurfacing to perform improvements at the Lockwood Parking Lot, located at the southeast corner of Lockwood and Third Avenue. Now, any remaining funds, should these be constructed below the proposed estimate, would be held until the spring of 2014 and committed towards additional resurfacing activities. And then, like I said, once we have an accurate final cost from the streets previously resurfaced, then it will submit a budget amendment to city council to carry the remaining funds forward, and if approved by council, a change order will be executed with the contractor for this additional work. And just as a reference, the street segments that we are looking at and performing this work on would be Owen Street from Huron to Huber, Bosley from Bolt to Palm, Kavanaugh from Washington to Eighth, Kavanaugh from Eighth to the tracks, the railroad tracks, 11th Avenue from Park Street to Washington, basically the curve just past the fairgrounds. And then, on our major streets, we would look at redoing Henry Street and Wilson Street. And those, those may not be the absolutely worst street segments that exist out in our system, but they're the street segments that we can put this, put this amount of work into and then get 10 or 15 years. There's other street segments that are probably worse, but they have either poor utilities that are slated to be reconstructed in the near future, or they're deteriorating to the point that it's just, we don't need a total reconstruction. So, like I said, these may not be the worst streets that exist out there, but they're ones that we feel we can do an adequate amount of work on, and get that 10 or 15 years out of it with just a simple resurfacing. You know, as an example, Owen and Bosley Street are both streets that were chip sealed a number of years ago, probably seven to eight years ago. Still, the center, two-thirds, is still in pretty good shape, the outside edges are starting to ravel. We can still save that street. So, that's the things that we tried to target. And again, we're working with our paving contractor right now on that parking lot as far as costs, and while it may not be a complete resurfacing in that parking lot, there are sections in there that we need to remove the pavement and resurface, because the surface is just deteriorating to the point that we can't, can't just overlay it. This would be the lot closest to Field Harvest Table, the insurance facilities there, it's that parking lot. The other one across the street is in poor condition as well, but in that parking lot, we need to do some storms or improvements to get it so that it drains and it will last. So, with the $60,000, we just couldn't target that one as well.
Are any of these local streets, streets that councilmen either discussed in the past as far as when the detour for Washington went?
No, we actually, we actually looked at those, and they were not in as bad a condition as, as these were.
Okay.
And, yeah, well, I certainly don't know where every council member lives, I don't, they believe there's any of these that are adjacent that he comes from.
Well, because he's brought it up several times, and he's not here today, so I thought I would just break it up, because I'm sure he would, so.
How does this compare to, and overall, this is just a question on the overall street repairs. How are we doing this year compared to years past? It is, it feels like we're doing more, is that a correct assumption? Is it about the same?
In the past years, we've had to, we've had to rob from that resurfacing money to complete other projects. This year, we did not have to. We came off a fairly light winter. Our winter maintenance dollars were much less than we've seen typically. Of course, we, I just heard a report, we had, I think, 36 inches less, inches less snow this past year. And while that's not a direct correlation, because if you get a lot of small ones that we have to solve out, it's more expensive, but we did see a reduction in our winter maintenance expenses. So, we did not have to necessarily rob from the resurfacing money to offset that. And that's kind of why we hold our resurfacing money till the end of the year, because if we have just a horrendous winter, that's where I have to go get that money to cover our winter maintenance. And it's designed that way. This was a year where we had lots of money available to continue and to stay with that. I shouldn't say lots, we had the funding that was there and committed. Is it as much as we've done in the past? A few years back, you know, we were up to a situation, and we were spending $400,000 to $500,000, where we were doing 17 blocks of resurfacing. You know, so, we're nowhere near that level, but it's much more than we've seen done in the past three to four years, yes.
And one other question, too, just curiosity, on the local streets, we're doing 11 blocks for $137,310, and then on the major, we've got five blocks for $77,670. I'm just curious, is it, you know, is there more work when we say, is it considered just a major street, or is there, you know, additional funds that we're getting in?
Typically, on our local streets, you'll see some of those are a thin overlay, where we're just going in, we're putting a surface core, inch and a half surface course over it. Some of them are crushing shapes, and that's where we go in there and we physically grind up the surface. We have a re-graveled shape, compact it, and then paper over the top. We're doing that on John, on Henry and Wilson Street, but we also put just a little bit thicker asphalt coating on there. Typically, we'll put about three inches on our locals, on the majors, we'll put three and a half roughly. So, it is a little more costly. Typically, our majors are a little wider. Henry and Wilson don't have curb and gutter, so we're going to have to have some gravel work on the outside edges, et cetera, so.
Okay, thanks.
And the action you need on that is an approval of additional resurfacing projects?
The additional resurfacing as proposed.
Okay.
My major.
So moved.
Second. Noah?
Yes.
Wallabara?
Aye.
Nielsen? Yes.
Hey, thanks, Rich. And I didn't thank Mike for coming up earlier, and to not thank you for your presentation. Next up, we've got B, is Site Tech Park Pedestrian Bridge Replacement?
This has been a project that, you know, first came to light roughly last June. It was, the bridge was starting to deteriorate. We did some patching on it, and it lasted for a period of time. We actually started working with a Home Depot crew. They approached us last year, and then due to scheduling, scheduling activities, their schedule, and we just could not make it happen last year. This spring, again, we did some temporary repairs on it, and it was, it was holding up fairly well, but we have seen it continue to deteriorate. So, once again, contacted the Home Depot team, and they, they had talked to us on a number of occasions about wanting to participate and work with the city to reconstruct that What they basically have proposed is that they will provide the labor and the oversight expertise to physically perform the work. We would still need to buy the materials, and obviously, buy the materials from them if they're going to do it. But they will, they will provide that oversight and work with volunteers, if there are any available, to do that work. Now, the bridge that we, the pedestrian bridge that we're going to put in there is going to be significantly stronger than the ex- significantly stronger than the existing one. When we run, and this came, it kind of came as a shock to me, when we run our trackless, our holders, the small sidewalk brooms or sidewalk plows that you see all running around, those have a curb weight of about 7,000 pounds, which is pretty significant. So to facilitate that kind of weight going across there and holding up, we're gonna have to beef that design up much stronger than what is there right now. It's all been taken into account by the Home Depot. They got with their suppliers of their beams. They ran the calculations, came up with a design for them. And Home Depot provided a quote of materials of about $2,893.93 to facilitate just the materials to do that bridge, and again, they would do the labor, et cetera. So in addition to that, what we're gonna do is to ensure that this bridge lasts, stays in place, is secure. We're gonna pour concrete abutment on each end, that those beams and the bridge will actually set into. It's not referenced in this memo, but we're looking at, you know, a thousand, we're hoping right around $1,000, but it could be as high as $1,500, depending on the steel that we need to put in there and that. We're getting, we're requesting prices right now from our concrete contractor. And when we bid out our sidewalk program, we often have miscellaneous concrete activities, concrete pours like this. So we put a line item in there for them to provide us the ability to do this type of work and do these additional concrete activities. So we're working with that concrete contractor right now to give us a price on performing that work. But, you know, based on our past experience, what we've seen in there, we're writing that $1,000 to $1,500 for that. In addition, once those concrete abutments are poured, we'll need to go in there and basically asphalt patch up to them, because we're gonna lift that bridge up, get a little bit higher out of that riverbed. Right now, it sits basically in the river channel. We're gonna get that up about a foot to 18 inches, maybe even two feet. We've just, we've gotta really look at it. And with that, we're gonna have to go in there and feather back on the asphalt. That we're estimating at, about $600. And that's our hand patching price that we paid. And again, that's in our tubular resurfacing contract. We have that set up to be able to do that work. So all said and done on this project, we're looking at a total expenditure out of pocket of about $5,000. Typically, the way that would be handled, we have money set up. We actually increased, we knew so we had some maintenance activities, we needed to undertake. In our parks fund, we actually bumped up our repairs and maintenance by about $5,000. Additionally, we have, because our bike paths, a lot of our bike paths involve sidewalks, we typically would take a portion of the cost out of our sidewalk contract and then a portion out of our parks, because it kind of services both. So, I mean, we do have the funding available to undertake those activities, like out of the parks fund and our public works fund, which is where the sidewalk program comes out of. If council approves this, we actually, we had a call from the supplier. They're probably three weeks out, maybe even a little more, on those beams to get them in here, so, from their supplier. We did talk with the Home Depot folks. They actually, Home Depot has a grant program that we could pursue, but what he, the gentleman I'm working with indicated, those grants are really targeted towards veterans and veterans activities. And while I'm sure veterans use this and write across it, it really wasn't geared towards that. So, you know, I know at this time, let's not try to pursue that. There may be other avenues out there. There may be interested parties out there that might be willing to donate, you know, towards this. We certainly haven't contacted anybody, but we don't, as a typical rule, as city officials go out and ask suppliers and that for donations of this magnitude. But it is something that maybe if it does get out in the media, there may be some folks that step up with an interest. I know that in the past, Lions, Bernie Lamp has contacted me from Lions, has expressed an interest in providing some of the labor. And what I'll do is I'll marry those two together with the Home Depot crew in Lions to see if that can work. It may not work at the timeframe that needs to be done, but at least we can try to get those two, because they have expressed an interest in doing that.
Well, I'm a Lion. I'm not interested in being married to that at Home Depot, but I'd be more than willing to volunteer.
I don't want this bridge to be delayed any longer than it already has. So don't take me wrong. But I would, I talked to Rich a little bit this morning about how prepared we are and have we, you know, and this might even be a good avenue to advertise, if you will, or remind people in industries and businesses again that we do have an adopt a park slash this would be adopt a bridge type of scenario. I want to give engineering as much time as possible to get everything together and established. There isn't a huge rush now, in my mind, because it's July, August, it's your high peak bicycle walking. I don't, if we were to approve this, I really wouldn't want to get it started until the earliest, maybe early fall, because I would, that's a heavily used area, and no one's in any more danger today than they would have been. I've been there, I go across that, there's no real danger. It's not gonna go any further, because the bridge is literally sitting on the floor of the creek, so it's not, I don't think it's gonna sink any further. The repair on it right now is, the temporary repair, I feel, is in pretty good condition. I'm not in a big rush to approve this, only because I'd like to see the whole package. In the event that the concrete comes back indifferently, either way more expensive or way less expensive, you know, then we might be in a situation where we'll have to approve more, because what we'd be doing right now, I would assume, is approving, you know, like an approval of funds not to exceed $5,000 or not to exceed 5,500 or something of that nature, or?
Well, basically, because of the other activities, we already have contracted prices out for the asphalt patching and the concrete. Typically, we just run those through those programs. The wood purchase, the actual materials purchase exceeds that limit for our purchasing policy, where we would technically need to get three quotes. But because of the volunteer nature, that's why we wanted to bring it to council, to get authorization to, for lack of a better term, deviate from that purchasing policy because of the donated oversight and the provided by Home Depot.
Right.
Typically, the other elements of it would just be handled through our sidewalk and our asphalt patching contract.
So they're relatively insignificant? So you wouldn't have to come back?
Not necessarily.
Because that would be my concern.
Yeah, it was more because of packaging together the volunteer labor with the purchase of materials, that they have to both come basically from the same source, which normally, for the amount of materials, the dollar amount, we would be required to go get quotes. And we're asking to basically waive that policy in order to be able to not only get the materials, but then the donated labor to rebuild the bridge.
From Home Depot.
From Home Depot. So that's really what we're asking for at this point.
Okay. So you're just looking at that the approval of the package?
Right. This is $3,900.
What is your timeline? Am I accurate in what I would suggest, or would you rather do it?
Listen, you're probably about three weeks out before the materials arrive. Then they would have to schedule it in their schedule, so I'm guessing you're four to five weeks out. You're gonna be into August. I'm getting, you know, delaying it back to September, mid-September start, sometime after Labor Day.
Labor Day.
Get those right. Sometime after Labor Day would be our target anyway.
And it would just be, some of it dictated by Home Depot's schedule with their people and their volunteers, but I'm sure if we said we would prefer it to be after Labor Day, that we can work that out with them.
Do we have an idea, Rich? Like, let's say if we just took this project on, what that cost would be? How much are we saving with this generous volunteer?
No, we would, I mean, to get a real handle on it, we would have to bid that out. And they're giving us contractor prices, I'm sure, on the materials. So you're probably looking at, at least, you're probably gonna have 40 man-hours in there. With fringes and everything, you're $50 an hour, so.
$2,500, somewhere in that, or the $2,200?
$2,250, that's a pretty close number.
I think it's a good deal. I move we authorize the materials to be ordered and that through Home Depot, and that we pull together a volunteer team and fix the bridge.
My second.
Walagora?
Well, I just have just a brief discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, because normally I don't. And you're gonna facilitate that with the, and include the Lions?
What I'm gonna do is, I've already talked to the foreman at Home Depot. All I'm gonna do is get him in contact with Bernie, and to see if those two can mesh their schedules and that. If I, quite frankly, the third wheel getting in the middle, it's just, I'd rather let those two, if they can work it out, great. I'll just facilitate the two being in contact.
Go ahead, sorry.
Walagora?
Aye.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Noah?
Aye.
Thanks, Rich.
I move we adjourn the closed session.
Nielsen?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.